Welcome to the Joint Meeting of the Greenville City Council and Greenville Utilities Commission, Monday, September 19, 2022. I am Mayor PJ Connolly. I'm presiding over the meeting. First, I would like to call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor for Tim Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now I'll call on Chairman Darden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Amy Wade to ascertain if we have a quorum. Could you call roll, please?
Okay. Chair Darden.
Here.
Commissioner Geiger.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Wall.
Here.
Commissioner Stotin.
Here.
Commissioner Braswell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
And Commissioner Blunt had an excused absence.
Thank you, Amy. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. Period is reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Sir, first registered speaker is Mr. Jeff McKinnon. Mr. McKinnon, you have three minutes to address the mayor, council, and the GUC board.
Should I use a mic or do you like?
I think I write it to the public.
Thank you.
Hi there. So it's unusual to be able to speak to the GUC board and especially the board and council together. So I want to take this opportunity to point out some opportunities on energy issues for GUC to update their policies and communications to make Greenville more prosperous, healthy, and environmentally friendly. GUC does much fine work, and I know the GUC prides itself on its environmental practices. In fact, its mission statement specifically mentions doing its work in an environmentally responsible manner. The first thing is natural gas. On the GUC website, I'd like to see us, and I'd recommend that we provide more accurate information about the pros and cons of natural gas versus electricity for heating, cooking, and so on. The GUC webpage currently reads, and has for quite a long time, or has statements about, for example, enjoying natural gas, quote, "without worrying about your carbon footprint," end quote. And such statements are incorrect because all fossil fuels have problematic carbon footprints. The webpage also encourages installation of gas fixtures, both outdoors and indoors, with no discussion of the greenhouse gas production or the health risks of burning gas indoors. Also, I've received what I imagine are paid Facebook posts from GUC encouraging installation of natural gas fixtures and consumption of natural gas. So it appears that GUC is spending money to promote the consumption of this fossil fuel. We can change these practices at no cost whatsoever, or in fact, with cost savings, especially because GUC also sells the alternative product, which is electricity, which is much preferable environmentally, given the sources from which our electricity comes. Second, our policy on residential solar needs to be brought in line with Duke and other utilities and best practices to encourage, rather than discourage, installation of residential solar systems. This could lead to thriving solar installation and maintenance businesses in Greenville and the generation of energy right here, rather than buying it from Duke and other distant providers. And this is in addition to the benefits of reducing greenhouse gas production and being perceived as an environmentally responsible city. Right now, GUC charges an additional monthly fee for homeowners to sell any solar-generated electricity back to GUC and pays them about a third less per unit for GUC to buy the electricity back than they charge when people buy electricity from GUC. And the rationale I've heard for these policies is that these charges are necessary to cover the cost of the service. And that's possible by some accounting. But it's also the case that GUC undertakes various activities that do not pay for themselves directly but are for the benefit of the community and for the environment. And given the small amounts of money involved, I think this should be one. And it could be considered an economic development investment, which is an area where we devote quite a bit of resources. So thank you. Board members and councilors are welcome to contact me if they wish to discuss any of these issues further.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anyone else signed up to speak during the public comment period?
Mayor Connolly, there are no additional registered speakers.
Anyone else present that'd like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, I see none. I close the public comment period, and I was so excited to hear it from Dr. McKinnon. I forgot to go through the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes tonight?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
All right. Did I have a motion from the council?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Chairman Darden?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the, except the motion, I mean, the agenda is given. We need a second and...
Second.
Second. Second and approved. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
See, I'm throwing everybody off tonight. That was me.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to item number four. Approval of the minutes from the April 25, 2022 Joint City Council Greenville Utilities Commission Board meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Need a motion and a second from GUC. Approved.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, second.
All right. We'll move on to item number five. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is the consideration of the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee recommendation on plan year 2023 health and dental benefits. I'll call forward HR Director Leah Frutal. He'll start the presentation. Ms. Frutal.
Good evening.
GUC Board of Commissioners. Tonight, our agenda item number five is, as the manager stated, the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee recommendation for plan year 2023 health and dental benefits. And we have with us tonight Mr. Parker Kramer with Mercer. Mr. Kramer is the Health and Benefits Actuary, and he's thoroughly familiar with our joint health and benefits plan. And Mr. Kramer will be presenting tonight. So I will turn it over to Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As mentioned, my name is Parker Kramer. I come from Mercer, and we work with the city and with the Utilities Commission on managing and optimizing their benefit plans. Quick overview for tonight. We're going to talk through the strategy and where you're sitting in the multiple-year strategy that we laid forward last year, some recent changes, as well as our recommendations for 2023. So just to start, the strategy for 2023 is highlighted on the left. We've been moving in compliance with the strategy plan. We're looking to achieve the target cost share. We're suggesting some plan design tweaks tonight. We're continuing to push care management for employees, which includes a variety of programs to assist them through different medical conditions. HSA incentives are recommended to stay the same, which is $500 for an employee and $1,000 for those who cover dependents on the health plan. And we're going to continue to promote the onsite clinic and carry out the strategy. Here's a quick summary of some changes that have been made in the last few years. The only thing I'm going to highlight for you right now is that for the past three years, you've been able to hold your employee rates flat, which has been great for employees. Fortunately, or unfortunately, this is the year that we'll need to increase the rates in order to sustain the cost share and cover the cost of the plan. Recent plan costs have begun to tick up this year. The clearest indication of this on this page, which has a variety of some of the key indicators for the plan so far in '22, are those graphs at the bottom, which is an illustration of your per-employee cost for all those covered by the plan. The blue line is for the last 12 months, and the gray is for the 12 months before that. And as you can see, the blue line, in most cases, is exceeding the prior year. So we are seeing some costs returning to more normal usage following some suppression that happened during the pandemic. And then, of course, ongoing medical inflation as well is a factor. As we look ahead to the projections, we look to combine the city and utilities' historical claims, including those 24 months of claims from the prior page, with adjustments for expected cost increases. So that comes from our market study, as well as the inflation environment that we're in. There's a little bit of margin and then some consideration of COVID's impact as well. So for 2022, we have claims experience here through July of this year. So we've projected the five remaining months of the year and compared back to the budget that was finalized last year around this time. So due to actual claims being a little bit higher than expected, the projected net employer cost, which is circled in blue on this page, is 17.3 million, which is about half a million above last year's budget target, or 0.8 million higher after we adjust for some headcount differences. That projected shortfall will be considered within the 2023 budget. As we looked at plan changes for 2023, we're really looking at changing the co-pays slightly by increasing some office visit co-pays and some pharmacy co-pays, which are highlighted in blue. So for the core plan, the current structure is a $20 co-pay for a primary care physician or a $40 co-pay for a specialist visit. That would increase slightly to $25 and $50 next year. The changes on the pharmacy side are for what we call Tier 2, 3, 4. These are for some of your drugs that are a little bit more expensive, including those that are covered either on a formulary list or not on a list, or as a specialty drug. So today, those co-pays are $30, $50, and $100, and they would be increasing to $35, $60, and $150. These two plans that we're showing here, the enhanced and the core plan, this is about 90% of the population that is in one of these two plans. 90% of those who enroll are in these two plans. So we're still looking to maintain the plans in line with the market, which you can see the market plans and benchmarking off to the side. But we're really just using this as an opportunity to promote the onsite clinic a little bit more that is in place and also offers some top generic drugs for free through the clinic. For the high deductible health plan, we're not recommending any changes for next year. For 2023, as we extend that projection from 2022 forward with another year of expected trend and consideration of those plan changes we just reviewed, the expected 2023 cost would be 18.2 million, which is circled there in blue, and that's a total rate increase of 10%. That increase is a little bit higher than the historical, which has been more 6% to 7% in the employer market for health plans. But most employers also haven't had the three years of flat increases that you all have. So viewed over a multi-year period, it's not surprising. This brings us to the recommended contributions for next year for employees. As we thought through with staff the increase, we see that dependents are 1 to 2, from 1.2 to 1.5 times more expensive than employees, and we're competitive on dependent premiums. So we think the fairest way is to allocate 5% to employees and 11% to those who cover dependents, which yields an overall increase of 10%. As you can see, the dollar changes are all shown here and bolded across the different salary tiers that exist, as well as retirees. And no one's hit too hard from a dollar's perspective. A quick run-through of the dental plan. The dental plan has been running well. It's in line with expectation. Experience has seemed to level out in recent months, and it's very consistent with the prior year. When we took a look at the projection, the projection suggested a slight decrease in rates for next year, which is circled in blue there, or a little bit below that blue circle. It's negative 2.3%. But we all agreed it was prudent to have no change from the current rates. So these are the 2023 contributions, which would recommend keeping the dental rates the same as what they are today for employees. Which brings me to the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I have a couple of questions about acronyms. ASO?
ASO stands for Administrative Services Only. It's when you are paying the claims yourself, but you're paying a carrier to administer the plan for you. And those are the fees you pay. In this case, Cigna.
SL?
Stop-loss. You all have coverage for any individual who exceeds, I think it's 300,000. It's in that range of claims.
And then EE?
Employee, or enrolled employee on the health plan.
Okay, super. Thank you. That was some housekeeping. A question that I'm not sure if it's best for you, perhaps better for some of our executive staff, which is looking at the co-pays for prescription drugs. I see that for top-tier medications, I think currently it's $100 co-pay, and that's going to increase to $150 co-pay. Is that right?
Correct.
I think my question is, you know, patients don't always have a choice of what medications they need to take and what medications they are prescribed. And I'm thinking, especially when you have particularly egregious conditions that may not have a lot of available treatments, and you have to take this top-tier drug, I'm concerned about that co-pay that may create hardships. And I'd like to find out what are your thoughts, or maybe some of our staff have thoughts about that co-pay.
Sure. I can offer my thoughts. So from a specialty perspective, the first, I think, is the plan finance perspective. But I'll touch on the question that you had, which I think is more of the empathy on the employee side, excuse me. From a cost perspective, the specialty drugs are a driver of the cost. So that was one reason that we highlighted a higher increase there. And although it's a little bit higher than what some of the others in the benchmark have done, I do think there has been an intention by many to highlight those specialty drugs and increase costs more. But to the points that you made, I think one thing that is in place for employees that's helpful, you all do have a Save-On specialty program through Cigna. This is a program for employees to be able to get free specialty drugs. It doesn't cover all specialty drugs, but it does cover a lot of common specialty drugs. These are very high-cost drugs, but they're drugs where Cigna is working essentially on your behalf to get a better price for those and then giving those, sorry, giving those for free to the employees.
Well, that's certainly good to know about. And yes, as you mentioned, comparisons. Our top-tier drug co-pay would be 150, and the other comparisons, the highest is 118, 68, 85, and 106. I mean, there's a big difference there.
Yes, and I think the intent there was to maybe get a little bit ahead of it with this change in the sense that it's been driving cost in recent years. We don't typically adjust it every year. We tend to just hold it. And so I think we went a little bit higher than the benchmark for that reason.
Parker, can I?
I'd also add this, that this is a self-insured plan. And as a self-insured plan, what we try to do is we weigh these decisions with the health plan is to, and as self-insured, that means that we pay the cost, that we pay the cost of all the claims. There's some additional fees, the stop-loss insurance is a fee. We contract with Cigna, that's the ASO, that's the ASO charge that we have, that we pay Cigna to administer the health plan for us. So self-insured, all the cost is being borne by the city, the employees, and the dependents. So with that being said, what we try to do is balance who is using the services and the cost of those services with who is bearing the cost. And we try to do that as equitably as possible. In our plan, we allocate fees or premiums based on salary bands, so that we are trying to be, provide some greater assistance to some of the employees and the lower salary bands. But that's part of the reason that we have made this change related to Tier 1 is that we want to make sure, again, aligning the cost of the service or the drug with those that are using it, so that because specialty, and Parker can talk to you, I don't know, that specialty drugs are a huge driver of what we pay. There's a huge driver. So even though an employee is paying $150 for that specialty drug, that specialty drug could be costing the health plan tens of thousands of dollars. And again, it's, we're having to make hard decisions, but we really are trying to align the, align premiums and align these benefits with who is using them. In the last several years, we've employed lots of, put lots of measures in place to help with cost savings. We have measures in place to help employees navigate the healthcare system, know where less expensive alternatives are. We provided some incentives for employees to use cheaper pharmaceuticals if they are available. And we have, in the last two years, used the Save-On Plan, which resulted in premiums that have been returned back to the health plan that we roll in so that we can provide additional savings to our employees as much as possible. I don't know if you want to answer anything else.
I don't think there's anything else.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I appreciate all the information. And I do appreciate that the plan is self-funded. I remain concerned about that high premium. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smiley?
The Joint Pay and Benefits Committee has asked a lot of these questions and gone through, and more besides, has spent quite a bit of time working with staff on this. The recommendation, is the recommendation here yet? Do you have, these are, this is the recommendation, correct? So I would move that we accept the recommendation of the joint pay and benefit regarding the 2023 health and dental benefits.
Second.
All right. Questions been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Do you want us to vote first, or do you want to ask if there's any questions on your side?
Any questions from the GUC Commissioners?
No.
Need a motion and a second to also...
Motion that we approve.
Second.
All right.
Been waiting for that.
Motion was made on our side by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
I need to ask, do you accept the motion that's passed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Questions? Passes.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number six. Madam Manager?
The next item is the Joint Pay and Benefits Recommendation on the 2022 Compensation Study. Again, I'll call forward Ms. Frutal, who will provide the introduction.
Okay. Our last presentation is a, the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee recommendation on the 2022 Compensation Study, as the manager stated. And with us tonight are Ms. Ruthanne Elitch, who's the Vice President of Segal, and Ms. Maryann Edwards, who is a senior consultant with Segal. Both individuals from Segal have worked very closely with city and GUC staff over the last several months, and we are at the point now for a final presentation to you all. So I will turn over the presentation to them.
And thank you for the opportunity to be here before you this evening. I do want to express my appreciation to all the staff, both from GUC and the city, for all of the collaboration and work that we have done together on this study. And we're proud today to present to you our findings and recommendations and answer any questions that you might have about that. So we'll cover just very briefly the overall goals and objectives of the study. Then I'm going to ask Maryann to talk a little bit about the methodology and some of the adjustments that we're recommending to your pay schedules. And then I'll kind of wrap it back up with any next steps and answer any questions that you might have about our recommendations and findings. Want to begin just a little bit about the overall purpose of your compensation program. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but there really is three foundational components of your compensation program. And first and foremost, of course, you're trying to attract and retain that talent that you need to be able to provide to your customers and to the community. And that is done first by having market-competitive pay systems, a pay structure that also respects the internal relationships of jobs and how they're placed into that pay structure. And then, secondly, to provide opportunities for growth among your employees, so that when they come to work for you as either the city or the commission, they have opportunities for both professional growth as well as pay growth. And then, thirdly, we need to make sure that this is all done within a fiscally responsible manner. So we have these three components that we're trying to balance as we move through any work that we conduct with you to, and update your compensation system. This particular study was conducted in four phases. As I mentioned, I'll cover the first, the first piece of the introduction, and then Maryann will cover the methodology and the recommendations, and I'll come back to talk about the implementation. But we did have four phases. The first one is the market measurement, and we'll talk a little bit about where we went to gather data, who we collected it from, and the types of information we found. Then we'll talk a little bit about the next step, which was to look at your current pay structures. First, we look at the actual structure on which pay is administered, and then we'll talk about what happens to the actual incumbents. But first, building that foundation, that architecture of your pay schedules, and making sure they are accomplishing your overall relationship to market that you want them to be. And then, our third phase was to develop an implementation strategy, and then, of course, finally, to come to you for adoption of our recommendations, our adjustments based on your feedback, and have implementations that we think will work for both the city and the utility commission. So Maryann, if you'll pick up here.
Sure. I'm going to first walk us through the methodology for the market assessment process. There's four phases to this process. Very first was to identify a set of benchmark positions that covered both entities, then determine the appropriate survey sources from which to gather data, then to survey and conduct that market pricing analysis, and then, you know, finally, once we've gathered all of that data, to draw some observations. Displayed here are a list of the benchmark job families from which we gathered 134 benchmark jobs. Fifty-seven of these were from the city. Another 57 were from the commission, and there were 20 shared positions represented from these various families. We selected 15 public-sector employers as peers for the survey, as well as seven utility service providers. The public-sector peers are listed there in the first two columns on the left, followed by the utility service providers in the third column. And then we supplemented this data with... And then we supplemented this data with six published data sources. Um, one is a municipal survey, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Survey. Uh, there were three utility surveys, uh, AWWA, AGA, and APPA. Um, and then two private-sector published sources that Segal provided. Um, these are subscriptions that we participate in, and, uh, these two would have represented primarily the private-sector, uh, peer, peer group that, uh, we wished to bring into this. And it's notable that all of this data was geographically adjusted to the Greenville area using a cost-of-labor strategy from the Economic Research Institute. From here, we conducted, crafted and conducted a market survey that really had three main parts. Uh, the primary focus of this survey was on base pay, um, looking, gathering minimum and maximum range data for those 134 benchmark jobs. We also surveyed supplemental pay practices such as sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses, tool allowances, employee referral bonuses, um, and then finally asked about various pay practices, such as how salary structures are defined, uh, or designed, uh, from everything that has to do from the minimums to the maximums and that, that distance between the two, um, how pay progresses within those, uh, organizations, as well as how structure adjustments are made. And from this survey, we were able to make a number of observations about the positions across both entities. What we, what is useful to know is that those 134 benchmark positions represented 60% of the employee population across both entities. So that's a good degree of representation among those positions. Overall, those 134 benchmark positions were about 92% of the market median. So that is telling us that they, that they, uh, on a structural basis, are about 8% below market. And then along the right-hand side, um, we can discern the distribution of employees in those positions to that competitive range. We've defined a competitive range as being within 90% to 110% of the market median. And what we learned is that there are 45% of the, uh, positions across both organizations within that market competitive range. However, there are 53% of positions across both those organizations, uh, below the competitive range, and only 2% of those, those positions above the competitive range. From this market data, we've been able to propose new pay structures. Uh, when I speak of a pay structure, I'm talking about the schedule of pay ranges, um, the number of pay ranges, and, uh, another aspect of structural design is the difference between the midpoints of each range as you go, uh, up the range structure. So the first of these, and the largest, is the general pay structure that is shared by both entities. Um, we are recommending that you combine the first two pay ranges and maintain 22 open ranges. There are currently 23. We recommend that you adjust the structure, the range structure, by 10.1%. Uh, we've arrived at this by, uh, the 8% that was found in the peer-market survey. Um, that survey was conducted early in the spring of 2022, and we know that this will be, uh, if accepted, will be implemented in 2023. So we also recommend a 2.1% structure adjustment based upon World at Work's projected average structure adjustment. World at Work is a, a compensation society, professional society. We do recommend that you adjust the range minimums, range width from minimum to maximum to be 55%, um, to better reflect what we're seeing in the market. It is currently 50% from minimum to maximum. We recommend that the midpoint progression, uh, increases gradually from 5% to 10% through the pay structure. This is similar to what is currently in place. And as a result of this and what we found in the market, that you further change the grade placement of 133 jobs, which is about 100, or, which is about 31% of your current positions, to better reflect their market data. So these are jobs that were not part of the benchmark study, but because of their relationship to benchmark positions, for example, if there is a first level and a second level, if we move a first-level position, the second-level position needs to move in a corresponding way. So the decisions here in our recommendations with regard to grade structure methodology really is to emphasize the market competitiveness of the structure. So we're not talking about people at this point, we're talking about the structure. There are also two pay structures for your sworn police and fire positions within the city. Um, these are relatively, uh, the recommendations are really to update what you currently have in place in terms of the number of pay ranges. There's no need to change that. What's notable about the police and fire structures is that these are built, um, from average survey minimums and average survey maximums. The police and fire structures, uh, given that the, uh, those, those positions are rank-based, um, there is variability between the pay range progression. So we really anchor to what the market minimum and the market maximum is. And the range width also varies, unlike the general structure. Um, on the police structure side, we're seeing 19% to 58% from minimum to maximum as a variability among those grades. Um, and that difference is just a slight change from currently 19% to 50%. There's no change, uh, in those range widths on the fire structure side. And then on average, uh, the police pay structure represents, uh, a, uh, increase from old structure to new of about 3.35%. And on the fire side, about 4.25%. So actions you've taken have kept, uh, those structures in line with market. All of the, um, structures, the general structure, the police pay structure, and the fire rescue structure can be found in your appendix, seeing, uh, the current structure to the proposed new structure. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Ruth Ann to talk about implementation and next steps.
So up till now, Mary Ann's been talking about looking at your pay structure and your pay ranges and how they compare to what market has established. So now we want to talk about, if we're going to make these updates to your pay structure, what do you do with the individual incumbents that are within that pay structure? And so now we'll talk about, a little bit about what some of the implementation options are. So just as a next steps, we're, we're talking to you about our recommendations, asking for approval for adoption. Um, and I'm going to explain to you what we think is a reasonable implementation plan to move employees through that structure into that new proposed ranges. And then we'll talk a little bit about, uh, ongoing maintenance, because, as you know, the market never sits still, it continues to move. And so as you continue through, you know, your normal business cycles, you'll need to include review of your pay structures annually to make sure that you've looked at range movement over time. And World at Work and many other entities provide solid documentation on how quickly ranges are moving. But, uh, let's talk first about how to get to, um, to a proposed implementation. When we talk about, um, taking these new structures and, and what do we do with employees to kind of bring them into this new relationship in, in pay? We've offered a couple of options to, um, the, the city and to the utility commission. And two of them, um, are pretty much the same, except they are, the, the documentation or the, the actual implementation has got a cap of how much the maximum of an, an employee can receive. And the third one is, as you would expect, um, an option that is probably more expensive, or we know it's more expensive. And let me explain what those two are. One of them we call decompression. And what that basically means is, let's look at, uh, the pay range and where employees should fit into that updated range based typically on time and position, because we know how long, that's data we have. We know how long employees have been in their position. And if they've been performing, um, appropriately or performing at a high level, they should move through that range of pay. And so we call that review called decompression. Let's spread people out so that you don't have a new employee or someone that's been hired recently that's making the same as an employee who's been here for some period of time and successfully performing in the position. So the first two options were what we call decompression. And then the third option is, uh, what we call maintenance. And, and basically what that says is, if I am at the entry of the current range, and I'm going to stay at the entry of the new range, if I'm at the maximum of the new, of the current range, I'm going to stay at the maximum of the new range. As you know, if we're moving these structures 11 point something percent, that's a pretty hefty increase. And so that's a very expensive approach. So as a result of looking at that, and then this process, other process of what we call decompression, we are recommending to you what we consider to be kind of that middle, uh, implementation option, which does look at how long people have been in their position, spread them out through the range, and then, uh, do not put a cap on this one, on the, on the increases, because we didn't found that it had significant enough savings to really provide the benefit of, uh, not, not giving them, uh, not putting the cap on it. So, uh, let me explain a little bit about, more about what we're talking about. When we look at, uh, where employees currently are, the first step we would take is we would say, we're going to use these new ranges, and we want to make sure that everybody's within that range, because you may have hired some people recently that are, uh, going to be less than what the new range minimum is going to be. And we don't want to put them at minimum, because you're going to continue to hire. And so we want to put them somewhat above minimum, so that as you hire new people in, you won't be compressing their pay. So our first step is to put the new ranges, or we recommend putting the new ranges in place. Anybody that's below entry, move them at to 5% above the new minimum. And that creates that differentiation between them and any new hires you might, might, um, might include over the next year or so. Then what we recommend is-
And the 5% is not 5% of their salary, it's 5% of the range.
5% above the entry.
So if the range is from 50 to 60, and you say 5%, you're not talking about 5% of 50 grand, you're talking about 5% of the 10 grand.
5% of the, 5% above the entry. So you're correct. If I am at $10, if it's $10 an hour, you'd move them to 5% above the $10 an hour is their entry.
But it's not 5% of $10. It's 5% of the range.
Yes, I'm saying if the range is, the entry is $10, it'd be 5% above the $10. So yes, 5% above the entry.
We're moving people into the range.
5% above the entry, is that?
I, I think I understand you, I just think what you're saying, the way you're describing it is very confusing. That if you were to say somebody was making $10, and you're going to give them 5%, then that sounds a lot to me, but like $10.50. But if the range is between $10 and $12 an hour, and it'll be 5% of $2, correct?
No, it's 5% of $10.
It's 5% of the entry.
Yeah.
So let me just, let me just start over again. Whatever the entry is, it's 5% above the entry.
When you say the entry, are you talking about the average minimum?
It is the minimum of that range.
And you determine that by an average based on your survey? Is that how you determine that?
So the structure is developed, looking at, um, a, a, a range of pay, like the general range, is you match up the midpoint with the market, and then you build a spread around it. And as we mentioned, the 50%, 55% is what we're recommending around this. So the midpoint for the general structure is anchored with market. And then you have an entry and a maximum that's built around it. And so in this case, what we're saying is, in order, your structure is already built similar to that, it's at 50% spreads. So we're shifting it by 11 point-
10.1.
10.1%, sorry. And then we're, we're spreading it about 2.5% on either side to have a full 55% spread.
But, um, my question is, when you say the word minimum, are you speaking about the average minimum based on your current survey for salaries for that position?
No, sir. I'm talking about the minimum of the range. The average salaries is what is targeted for the midpoint.
Each, each of the 22 ranges that we're proposing has a minimum that is anchored to a 50th percentile, which, related to a 50th percentile that is anchored to the market data for the benchmarks that aligned with that range.
And the reason I'm asking this, as you clearly see, we're confused. Imagine those watching this on TV or in the audience, how they feel when they've not had the benefit of reading this report. That, that's my concern, is it's confusing.
Okay.
And I'm trying to make sure that everybody that sees this clearly understands what we're trying to do.
Sure.
So what if you took a scenario, at least one of the positions, and give us those salaries, and put that one at like there, and maybe it'll break down a little bit more?
Okay, happy to. Um, because if there's somebody that's making less than, let's, I, I use $10 an hour as an entry of a range, just as an example, but I will, let's take that aside, and whatever number it is, if I'm making less than that, I'm going to go to 5% above the entry of that range versus right at the entry, whatever that number is. Is that, am I confusing you, sir?
It makes sense to me.
When we talked about, I, I, it makes sense, I just think it's not the intention of the, um, of the plan. When we talked about this in the Pay and Benefit Committee, and let me use a little different number, let's say somebody makes 50,000, let's say that the ra, the, the range they're in is between $50,000 and $60,000. So they would start at, so that the minimum of the range then is 50,000.
Right.
And, but you don't want anybody to be at that, you wanted to move them up to 5%. You move them up 5%. But it is not 5% of 50,000, it is 5% of the $10,000 range, correct? Because otherwise, when you move somebody at 54%, if they've been here for 18 years, you're going to give them 54% of $50,000 rather than 54% of the $10,000 range. That was my, when we, we talked about this at some length in the Pay and Benefit Committee, and all of these percentages were understood to be percentages of the range rather than percentages of the absolute salary at the minimum. And so if I've got that wrong, then please clarify it.
So the intent was to not put someone at entry if they were below entry, because they have been here for some time. And so the intent was to move them 5% above the entry. So-
But 5% of what?
5% of the entry.
Of the minimum.
Of the minimum.
Of the minimum.
Okay.
Apologize for the confusion and the misunderstanding. We did discuss this at length.
We just arrived at a different answer, Smiley, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Since we're asking questions, um, I got a couple. Anchored to 55% compared to anchored to 50%. What does that look like and why?
Yeah. And I may have mixed my words. So 50% versus 55% is, um, representing the spread between the starting entry point of the range, or the minimum, and the maximum, um, or top rate of the range. So, uh, when you're saying a, a 50,000 to 60,000, in actuality, with a 55% spread, that would actually be more like 50, 50,000 to, if my mental math is correct, 75, 75.5?
Just makes the range a little larger, a little more flexible.
A little larger, yeah.
Do you have any idea what, under this plan, what some of the, the net increases in minimums and maximums are? Are you going to talk about that?
Net increases in minimums and maximums.
So are you referring to how many people are going to go, who are below entry that-
No, I'm just curious, curious about the net, the percentage, what percentage of the net increases in minimums and max, maximums throughout all the, all the pay, uh, pay slots? What that looks like?
So, so the range, the full ranges are shifting by the 10 point?
That's the 10, okay, 10.1%.
Yes.
And then, when you talk, and this, I think, gets at Councilmember Robinson's question, when you talk about market competitiveness, this is the, uh, all the businesses on page nine, or public, public entities, I believe, and utilities and such, on page nine?
Yes.
And so all of this is tied in with those?
Correct.
Okay. And then page 18, what's a compa ratio?
So compa ratio is a, obviously a, a compensation term we use, but basically it's saying, we're going to keep you in the same location in that range, which, if you were at the middle of the range, you would stay at the middle of the range. It's basically a, a compensation term that talks about where you are in relationship to the midpoint, but it, it's really looking at the location within a range.
So mathematically, it's a current rate of pay over the midpoint, over the minimum, it could be over the maximum, but we use it over the midpoint, yeah.
Thank you. And then back to Councilmember Smiley's question, I think, if I understand correctly, that 5% being 5% of the minimum only applies to people who were already at the minimum of the pay range.
Or below the minimum.
Or below, okay, thank you.
So my question, would that be that 53% is at the low competitive range?
The, the, the number of, number of positions that are below the competitive range, some of those may already be within the, the range of the new proposed structure. So it's not necessarily that. So it's not necessarily that, yes.
In a couple of slides, we will work down to the numbers.
Show you the actual numbers, no, that's okay. So the implementation would be to take those employees below entry to five percent above the entry, then to also look at those other employees who are already within the range, and look at a target for them, looking at the number of years that they have been in their position. And assume that for every year they've been in their position, they should be at least three percent above entry. So in the chart below, you'll see that if they've been below, if they've been with the city or the utility commission for two years, then they would go six percent, that's the three times two years above entry, or three years, nine percent above entry. This is not an increase of three or six or nine percent to their pay, it's looking at how far they are from entry and making sure they're shifted up. So some employees will be above their target, other employees will get moved up to that target, so that they are spread out through the range based on their time in position. And this is what we're calling a decompression approach, which is kind of spreading people out, so you don't have them all lumped together within that pay range.
So to take the bottom of the scale here, eighteen, eighteen years in the position, again, we're talking about the fifty thousand, a fifty thousand dollar minimum, which is fifty, plus fifty-four percent, which would be twenty-six thousand dollars?
If you had anyone in that scenario-
So they would, so if you said the range was something like, would be more like fifty to seventy-five, and you started somebody at fifty thousand dollars and they'd been there eight years and they got a fifty, so you moved them up fifty-four percent of them, they'd already be at the top of the range.
If they've been there eighteen years, yes, they would be close to the top of the range.
But it is unlikely that you have anybody at the minimum who has been in that position for eighteen years.
Okay, that's just different than, when we were talking about it in the Pay and Benefit Committee, it seemed clear that these percentages were percentages of the range, not percentages of the minimum. So that in order to get to the midpoint, you would have had to make like seventeen or eighteen years. Now it looks like that somebody who's been at eighteen, who's been, been there eighteen years would, by this math, immediately move to the top of the range.
But they're likely not moving from the minimum, from the current minimum.
What you're saying is, is correct. They will be close to the maximum. But if someone has been in a position for eighteen years, you would have, expect them to have progressed through the range if they'd been performing in that position. Or they would probably have moved up to another job pretty soon. So either way, they are, they are near the top of the range.
It is notable that most of these adjustments are happening at the lower and middle pay ranges than at the higher pay ranges.
Yeah, we typically, I mean, when you talk about the positions that are being impacted, when I looked at those employees that are getting the higher increases, they're primarily your entry level positions or your lower, lower level positions, like your meter techs, your, your pipe layers, your laborers, your general maintenance, a lot of the refuse collectors, those are the ones that are typically seeing the higher increases, who have been in their jobs for a while. And you see also, since we're moving them up to a more competitive range of pay, that also gives them an opportunity for some salary improvement. Any other questions, sir?
Is there any type of like policy in place, or is there any type of like chart that is internal that we would track to find out people with a significant amount of time to the city or to GUC, so you would know if there was like, a large change in the budget? Because I mean, a lot of the stuff is going to have to be budgeted, so I guess my concern is, is if you have, you know, five to ten percent of the workforce and all of a sudden, you know, let's say that they're, most of them are going to be seventeen, but I'm guessing you're, you're going up gradually from four to seventeen. Let's say that they're eight to ten years of service to the city of Greenville or to GUC, that could be a significant change that we have to budget for on an annual basis. Is there anything in place where we're tracking that to make sure that when those changes make, come, move forward-
Sure.
-we're able to know that going into that budget cycle, we can properly allocate money, not only just for the, the general fund, but for each individual department?
Yes, sir, there is actually a spreadsheet that identifies each individual employee and the impact on their individual pay. And it can be sorted by department or by whatever code you have in terms of the employee documentation.
Is there a recommendation on how often that is being reviewed?
So, so this is just, this is an implementation plan that is entire, that is really intended to transition you. So for your future, your future pay administration, you have separate guidelines that talk about merit pay and, and how you adjust people's pay based on performance or time in position. And so you, I don't think you'd use this for future pay administration guidelines, it's only for the implementation of this, of these study recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
I know that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Wouldn't there be a big cost in the first year that you implement this, because you bring everyone, make sure you bring everyone up to the balance?
Yes, sir, and I have a, I have a chart that shows you the actual costs that we can-
Yeah. That's all.
Which is a good segue into this next slide, thank you. And so this next slide does give you a general breakdown between your general, first of all, we split it between the, the city and, and GUC. And, and within the city, we've split it between the general structure and fire and police. And this is set up to show you two tiers of increases. The first one is the adjustment to five percent above the proposed range minimum. And you can see it's split between the general fund would affect about one hundred and sixteen employees at a cost of about six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And fire would be seventy incumbents at about two hundred and ninety-three thousand. And in police, it'd be fifteen incumbents at about fifty-one thousand. This is the five, up to five percent above minimum. And GUC, eighty-nine employees would be affected and it would be a cost of about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars. So the overall cost for just bringing those to five percent above minimum is the one million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand for both entities. And then below that, you can see the breakout of the, what we're calling the decompression or the time and position adjustments. And within the general structure within the city, it's a hundred and fifty-nine employees at a cost of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. In fire, thirty-five, at a cost of one thirty-eight, five sixty-one. And in police, eighty-six, at a cost of two forty-eight, one oh four. And then in GUC, it'd be eighty, sixty-eight employees and would be a cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. So the overall cost for all entities, for all adjustments would be the three point one, one three eight million. At about, it's about four point four six percent of salaries, and this does not include associated benefits, just direct salary cost.
Four point four six percent of total payroll?
Yes.
And all that is first year cost to implement that?
That's correct.
Actually, if, if we implemented January first, it's the first year is only a half year. So the, the initial impact is on, is on the current fiscal year, but only half of it.
It's a cost for the first twelve months, basically.
That is full year cost.
So I guess we need to make sure our budget can handle a decision like that.
They have slides. They showed us some slides.
So I'm going to, any other questions about our recommendations?
Any questions?
Well, I couldn't resist. So the whole study was designed to try and get our average minimum and maximums in line with what the pay is for similar jobs, is that correct? Based on your survey?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, I'll see any questions?
GUC, any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we looking for a motion here?
We're happy, we're happy to answer any questions that the council or the commissioners may have, or a motion.
Is the staff prepared to discuss the impact on the current year budget and where additional funding-
We are certainly prepared to answer any questions that you all would have related to that.
Okay.
Financial Services Director Byron-
How much money is there in the current year budget to cover the, the additional, these, these first year costs?
Can you go back, while he's talking, can you go back on the slide and look at that, at the chart, I think the last chart that was on there?
I don't know why I just wanted to run it differently.
I think it was just one slide back. There you go.
There you go.
I mean, I'm just speaking, I have the city, I'm seeing this one point four five two number, and I recall we did put money in the current budget to, to address this, these anticipated additional salary costs. Can you review what that was?
Yes, we did. We, we included an additional million dollars in the current year budget. In addition to that million dollars, we also include, or, we also had about four hundred thousand dollars in excess health insurance withholdings from the, the previous year, which allows us to have about four hundred thousand dollars in health insurance savings for this current year, bringing us to about one point four million dollars that we have to allocate to this. So by implementing it in January, that gets us to half of the total funded needed for this particular implementation.
Including benefits.
Including benefits, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Just a, a point to make sure I understand, was there, you're saying that there was four hundred thousand dollars in excess from the self-funded healthcare program?
From, from last year, from the employer withholdings. So, yes, so what that means is that we have four hundred thousand dollars in savings for health insurance for this current, for, for this current fiscal year.
Because that goes back to my earlier question about the top tier, you know, drug price increase. If we had four hundred thousand dollars, you know, we managed it pretty well, I just wonder why we, you know, we've already voted and everything, it just kind of puts a fine point on that.
So, so that's from, given the claims that we had with the amount of money that we actually had, or the amount of funding that we have going into the health fund, we had essentially four hundred thousand dollars in excess last year that we sent over from the employer, not from the employee premiums, but from the employer side, that still allowed us to have our, our current fifty percent fund balance regulation within that fund.
And that fund balance has built up over a number of years.
Correct.
And we keep that as a safety net to ensure that if we have a rough year, we have ample amount of money to cover the health plan and won't have to go back to the employees or to the city for extras. So that, that, that fund balance that we have is really that safety net. And what Byron's indicating is that that, there is money that we do not have to make and that transferred from the previous year.
Correct.
So, but we would be spending the safety net? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, no.
There's only money above the safety net.
I'm sorry, where are you?
No.
No, we wouldn't be spending the safety net. This is in addition to what we plan to transfer already. So we're actually, we've saved four hundred thousand dollars because we transferred an additional four hundred thousand dollars last year, more than what we would have in order to meet our fund balance cap.
So the self-funded healthcare plan had four hundred thousand additional dollars to spare?
From what we sent over from the general fund last year.
Okay. My next question is sort of a general question. We were trueing up to about ten point one percent. Did we just, maybe for a number of years, not keep up, or, and this is not a question for you, but this is just maybe a question for Ms. Wall, Mr. Cannon, and how we got to the place where we were doing the true up?
Yes, we have made a, we annually, we, excuse me, annually, we look at our pay plan, the, the council and the commissioners will acknowledge this, and we do a study looking at several agencies and list that look at public sector pay, and we make some adjustments. What, and we do that every year. We do that, we, every year, certainly in my tenure with the city, we have made a market adjustment based on what a number of agencies or organizations say. What is different now is certainly the last two years, we have seen some extraordinary changes related to pay. And that's what is showing up in the ten point one percent. I don't know if you want to add to that, Tony, or not.
Yeah, that's right. We're, we're seeing it across the board with all four utilities. The market has moved unlike it's moved any time in recent history. That's where the twelve percent came in. We've already done two point one percent, as Ms. Wall said. So this ten, ten point one percent gets us to where we are finally back at market. It, it's just moved so fast over the last few years.
And, and you see that, you see that across the board with services, with materials that you need. We see it on bids that come in for projects that are, that well exceed the funds that we had anticipated. So it's just a really unusual period of, of time, and what we're trying to do is figure out what's the sweet spot of that compensation. So, because we need this to be able to retain, attract and retain employees.
And I think it also is worth noting that, I mean, I think as of last week, the current inflationary number is eight point three percent. And I think that, you know, as a finance person myself, in a, a normal year, you're looking at two to three percent. So that is extremely high compared to all the previous years. So doing this when we did it, it's going to be a much harder hit than if we would have done this two years ago, when it might have been maybe a two or three percent jump instead of a, a ten percent jump.
But if we had done it two or three years ago and not maintained it, we still would be in this position.
Right. What I'm just saying is like-
Because the market is what the market is at this point.
Right. What I'm just saying is, is you probably wouldn't have seen as high of a jump.
Oh, the, the percentage increase, correct.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Smiley.
Given the staff's report as to the budget availability, I move we accept the staff's recommendation and implement this plan as of January first.
Second?
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember-
Where does this put us? I know we mentioned we looked at some peer cities, where does this put us at from a competition standpoint in terms of like, average pay for first responders? Or maybe where does it rank us? Andy, I don't know if you have anything specific prepared?
Leah's always prepared.
She is.
So for first responders, one of the, let me see if I can get back to the, not sure where it is. Oh, gosh. Sorry, trying to get there. Right here. This slide talks about for police pay structures and the fire rescue pay structure, police was just off by a little under four percent, three point three five percent. Fire rescue just over four percent at four point two five. So that shows that for police and fire, we relatively were able to maintain market competitiveness. We kept up with the market. And so we, we've not had to do a lot of adjustments with those two pay structures. Compared to, the consultants mentioned that this survey was done early on in the spring of this year. So HR staff in the city, we did a recent survey, kind of on our own, anecdotally, just to see, because there has been so much movement in the market, as the manager stated. And what it indicates is that once these ranges are effective, January first of twenty-three, for police, we will be above market slightly, not incredibly huge. But our starting pay for certified officers, for instance, will be forty-seven, seven, and the average is forty-five. So that puts us above.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear that. I just, and obviously, you know, you have to have money in the budget to make decisions, and so obviously no knee jerk reactions, but I would like to see us, you know, continue to be above average in, in that category at a time in our nation when it's, you know, tough to get people to sign up for the job. I'd like for us to be a leader in that category. And I've talked with my councilmember colleague to the left, Councilmember Robinson, about this as well. It's definitely something I'd like to see us continue and try to focus on.
Correct.
Thank you.
You talked about sign-on bonuses, does that apply when we're above, when we move above the average? Would our consultants have to sign-on bonuses? You've got to know your shortcuts.
Correct. Sign-on bonuses, we've not implemented yet. I don't know if that's something we will implement. What we have implemented, one of the slides talked about pay practices. So we have implemented an employee referral bonus- So we have implemented an employee referral bonus that applies across the organization rather than to specific positions in order to try to fill hard-to-fill positions. So, you know, we'll have to monitor, monitor the market to see, you know, would sign-on bonuses, you know, be beneficial? You know, one of the things we don't want to do is offer sign-on bonuses to new hires, and then our employees who've been here sort of in the trenches with us, they're not, you know, able to get that same sort of benefit. So that's why we kind of have to weigh it and determine what, what makes sense for our organization.
Councilmember Robinson?
I've got a number of concerns in this, as to our first responders, of which I'm probably most familiar with, as most of you know based on what I do. But looking at this market analysis, it looks that over half of our employees are below the competitive range, if I understand the market analysis correctly. 45% are within the competitive range, and only 2% are above. And I know I've said this word, destination and grow Greenville greater, and I know we've got a budget issue, but as it relates to the police, this is what I understand currently. We are down 32 officers as we sit here tonight. There are six in the hopper, which means they've come online in October. That's going to put us down, you know, around 25, 26, that we're going to be down. We're down. We're losing officers to Snow Hill, to Aiden, to Kinston. Now, it could be a combination of pay, and it could be a combination of other things, but the perception in the country is defund the police and all that, so it's being, it's tough to hire police officers. I think we're having a hard time hiring officers and attracting officers to come to a field that's tough to be in under the current public perception. And then we want to keep one, because I understand officers now on the street, I think, and I may be off on this a little bit, but the officer on the street, not in the detective division, but on the street, is about two years' experience. They're training the guys who are coming out of BLET. So you've got, and this is no disrespect to those officers, because all they've got is they've got, you've got an officer with very little experience training a new officer. And all of us that sit on this council, representing all the districts, have our constituents who are going to meet a police officer or a fire EMT, and we don't want second or third, fourth best, we want the best. And also, I think we need to have officers commensurate pay to get them to come here. Right now, we're suffering. I mean, we can't, we can't, we can't get officers to come here, they're leaving, and that may not make a difference until you need a police officer. But also, if you hire one, you want to make sure when he goes out and deals with a member of the public that he's doing it, doing it in a professional manner. Because if he doesn't, or if he doesn't do his job well, then that could be a liability issue for the city, it could be a PR nightmare for our citizens in terms of what they complain about. But, you know, I know we've got a budget issue again, but I don't like this average minimum. I want to be above that. I want to be so we can get the pay that we can get officers to come here, that want to come here instead of begging for officers to come here. And I think that's a problem we're having going on right now, and I don't like that problem. And I know, again, we got, if we only got a few dollars, we can't do it so much, and it's just not my concept about the police officers. That's what I know the most about. My other experience is starting to go downhill after that. But our first responders need to be paid, and other employees, you all will say, I mean, I'm not kind of put a police officer above the guy that comes out and public works and does stuff that, fix it when your septic tank thing blows up in your front yard like I've had, because that's important to me when he came. But I think we should try and do better, and I'm, there's some confusion on this, and I don't understand some of the stuff, and I've looked at it, and I know, Councilmember Smiley, you've had some questions, and you and I are on the same page. What percentage is that 5% of? Is it the difference, or is it? So I don't know if we need to look at it more. Then you've got inflation that's killing everybody, and then we've got some additional costs that Councilmember Blackman pointed out, Blackman pointed out that we're going to have on those high-end drugs that, I mean, that's a lot of money for an employee to pay if they got to pay that drug, and it may not, it's not their fault they've got to pay for it, they got to pay for it. And that's going up, and I get it, we're looking at numbers, but at the end of the day, we're looking at people from our perspective, and I, I just don't feel this is enough, and I'm sorry that I, I don't hurt anybody's feelings when I say that, I just don't think we're doing enough for our employees. And I get it, we might not have the money to do it, but I just think that overall, my perception of this is not enough, not enough for our employees in City of Greenville, you see. And that's my two cents worth, and I appreciate everybody listening to me, but I would like to see us do more.
But I guess, my question would be to my colleague is, what would be enough? I guess, what's the benchmark that would be enough?
Well, here's the thing that, to me, is, that's a great question, but if you do a market study, you got to do something to have an idea of what is the, the average minimum. But if your average minimum is not getting an employee to come work for you, then you got to do more. And I don't know how much more you got to do, but I mean, if we're, you know, 53% below the competitive range, that might be a reason why we can't get, well, we've got 32 positions or going to be 25 open positions, we can't get anybody to come work. And it's certainly not just the salary, it's the perception of coming on for a job, that the media's beating you up when you try to do your job, you're endangered when you do jobs, because it seems like violence is going up through the roof, you pull a traffic stop over and you get shot in the face. I mean, it's a dangerous position to have. I don't know, that's a, a good question, but I mean, how much, how much do we pay to get that, those positions filled?
Well, you know, I would say that our, our study is identifying where we need to be, and, and I think that it's going to adjust some of those salaries to get us more in line with it, but, you know, I, I think that a lot of those things, especially with law enforcement officers, and I understand where you're coming from, a lot of those things we can't solve. Media is an issue, you know, this pay study is not going to do anything for the, to solve that. I think overall, I think the country's seeing an issue with police officers even jumping into the program to become police officers. We can do our best to get us to the point where it's competitive, and, you know, it allow those officers be duly compensated and compensated well, you know, and I know our city staff, I've talked in length with our city manager, who's made great progress with getting those salaries and making it more desirable to be in that program, but, you know, at some point, based off this benchmark, this is where that information came from, and a lot of the peer cities were brought into this study to make sure that we were in line with it. So, I mean, I totally understand where you're coming from, and I get it. My question would be is, if it's not enough, then what is? And what, what do we have to, to show that it's not enough?
Well, we know the average survey minimum, we know the average survey maximum. So we know what the minimum is, we know what the maximum is, and if we start at the bottom, we can only go up to the maximum, and I'm not saying we go to the maximum, I'm just saying, if we know what we're doing right now's not working, then maybe we need to do something a little bit more, I don't know. I mean, I wish I had the perfect hearing to say, it's a 7%, it's whatever percent, I'm just saying, we're having trouble getting police officers, and that's a bad deal in this city, when we see things going on, and not just get officers, but those that, when they respond, they're professional, and they treat our citizens, because they're doing a very hard job right now, and they're down 25, and I can't, I mean, you know, and then I didn't even mention this, we're number six in the state for accidents, not per capita, mind you. We're number six in the state for automobile accidents in this town.
We were one.
We were one.
So I would tell you we're making progress.
To Chief Saul's credit, to credit to him.
Yeah.
But when you, when you're down 25 officers, and you're trying to do all the investigations about the shootings, and the calls for service to your homes, and all the various aspects of Greenwell, and then you have very little time for traffic enforcement, which slows everybody down to try and make them safer drivers, but I'm concerned because we're, you know, that many down, and we're number six in the state for accidents, and that's not good.
Which, you know, which probably segments to, that's probably another discussion, because this is just the general study that was done for all the employees, and I guess we can continue discussions, because I have the same sentiment that you do as far as making sure that our, our officers and all of our employees are compensated correctly, but I just don't want to go down a rabbit hole where we're just making changes to one department.
Well, I see it all. I'm not, I'm using the police because that's where I'm most educated about, but when we say average survey minimum, that just doesn't sit well with me.
Well, I mean, also, I mean, I've had this conversation with the city manager today that, you know, the market right now is kind of a moving target. The way things are with the numbers that have come out, FedEx came out with their numbers last, last week, and they were much below the, the anticipated numbers that they were going to have, which tells you that probably consumer spending's going down when fourth quarter numbers come out at the end of this fiscal year. That could drastically change the market, and it could shift these numbers substantially based off of what happens with 8.3% inflation. I don't think any of us would have anticipated, even at, when this study took place in April, that those numbers would be that high. So I think it's a moving target right now. It's tough to go ahead and say that we want to be at this level, and we don't even know what the next six months are going to look like. So, you know, my personal opinion, this is a good starting point, and I think that we, as our consultant said, need to continue to keep an eye on it. They said once a year, I think probably once every four to six months, we need to be looking at to make sure that we're still in line with the market, but that's just my personal opinion. Councilmember Smiley?
I think that's a kind of a process question, in that, you know, a lot of work went into, and, you know, and an assignment went out to staff from council for better, you know, implicitly or explicitly, to conduct a pay study aimed at restoring our pay raise, our pay, our pay ranges to, to market. And this is what's come back, right? We certainly can, we have a strategy meeting coming up and a new budget to build in the coming months, you know, we can certainly build a budget that is designed to, to do better than that, right? But I think it takes council, you know, telling staff in, you know, with more than our words, right, but by actually, you know, voting for, and asking for and voting for, you know, a more robust budget for whatever it is we're trying to get done, that would allow us to, you know, to implement a study, to, to design a study that builds, if you want, you know, make you an employer of choice with, you know, in certain areas. I just don't know that we can, it's going to be, it's tough to do it in reverse order, right? It's, we have to start with, you know, setting it as a, as a, as a goal, you know, encouraging staff to budget for it, and so then, when we, when those analyses come back and tell us how to do it, we're in, we're in a place where we can. Right now, if we knew what this, you know, what, you know, the, the question that you and the mayor are approaching, you know, what is that number, even if we knew, we don't have the financial flexibility to implement it. And so my, my, you know, I would encourage us to take the analysis we've got, make the, make the, the change that is justified by that analysis, but if we feel like that the analysis is aimed in the, you know, at the wrong mark, then we need to go back to staff and say, okay, you know, what we want to achieve as a council and as a city is this, not this. And given that direction, I'm sure they can make that happen.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Blackburn?
A point of clarification. Ms. Futrell, I believe you said that with this plan that we are voting on tonight, this brings police officers, the scale as a whole, to 2% above market. Is that right?
Yeah, if that's the percentage. I was quoting actual average salaries or the, or the minimums. Again, January 1st, we're looking at 47,700 for the city as a starting rate for sworn certified officers. That's the minimum. After six months, their rate would increase by the 5% that you all were talking about a little earlier, which would bring it to over 50,000. So that's, that's the minimum. For the other, for the peer cities, that was the 45,000 is an average, and it's geo-adjusted. So, you know, again, from the slides, we compared ourselves to Cary, we compared ourselves to Raleigh and Wilmington, but we also obviously had to take into account the geographical difference between Greenville and Cary. And so taking those things into consideration is where the average of 45,000 comes into play.
And is that higher than the market average or the adjusted market average?
Yes, the 47.7 would be higher than the adjusted market average.
Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, Mayor Perotam Glover?
To the manager, have we done a study of the police department lately about, you know, I know that this is a study, okay, a study, but the reasons why people are leaving, are we finding out why people are leaving?
Yes, ma'am. We do an exit interview with all employees, and then we do a face-to-face one if they'll participate, and then we also will send them a link, and they can come, they can participate anonymously if they choose to participate honestly with the police department.
Because I'll.
No. So, so, and we do that for all employees. We treat, we do exit interviews with all employees so that we understand. And I do think it's important to point out, and I think this probably goes to Councilmember Robinson's point, is we are seeing vacancies that are higher than, than certainly I've seen in the five years that I have been manager across the board. We have some positions for which we cannot find candidates. If anybody who's watching knows of anybody who is a civil engineer and can come in to help us, we could put you to work very quickly, because we can, we have certain civil engineer, CE2s, CE1s, that we simply cannot fill those positions. We have some positions in our IT department that we cannot fill. Mayor Perotam, we have some equipment operators in solid waste that we are having great difficulty filling. This will help. We, it's always, it's always something that we need to look at and watch. What we're trying to do is understand what we do for salary, and what are the associated benefits we can put in. We have done some tweaking on the police and on fire to provide some additional incentives. Right now, we have an incentive for some paramedic training, and for the first time, we have a paramedics class that will go, and we'll have, we'll have 15 employees in that paramedics class, which is probably the first time since I've been here that we've been able to put so many employees in a paramedic class, because we did a little bit of tweaking on some salaries and created some incentives. So we have to look at a full perspective of what those incentives are. I'm going to just say this, this is only one piece of the puzzle. There are so many other factors as an, as you, an employee decides where they're going to work, and we've got to try to hit it with all those factors, but it is a moving target.
Right, that, that was what I was going to say, that, you know, maybe there, and you've looked at that, and people who are being paid higher salaries are leaving. So there is a problem, and maybe we should, you know, do an in-department study to see what's happening, because I've seen this happen between police chiefs and police chiefs and police chiefs, where there's a big exit right after. So, and then you end up with a lot of young officers, which every officer has to be, have to start young, you know, right out of BLET, but the thing about it is, is that are we retaining officers who want to stay and will stay, and is the starting salary a good enough salary so that they, that they won't fall back, they won't fall behind? Because I know that, I don't know what, for reasons, some of them have left, some left because they didn't like the city, some left because they didn't like, like taking orders, and some left for other reasons. It's not always, it's not always the job. A lot of times, it's for different reasons, you know? You leave for family, move family somewhere else, might maybe be better. So there are a lot of reasons, so, you know, I know that we pay a lot on studies, and it would be interesting to do a study, starting with the police department and the engineering department and places like that, where you're having problems recruiting and retaining people to work.
And if I could just share that we made two, I'll say we've made a couple of adjustments, certainly on the police side, I mentioned what we did for paramedics. This year, we implemented a master police officer, which provided that employees within four years, six years, six years of service had an additional 10% pay increase, and that, we promoted 60, I keep looking at Chief Saul's, about 60 employees received that master police officer rank, and we did that as of the middle of July, okay? The other thing that we have done is, we have increased the starting pay for, for police, so we, so that's for current employees. Let me just say, the master police officer rank, which we put into place in July, for which we, we promoted 60 employees, which they receive 5% now, Chief Saul's, and 5% upon the completion of their probationary period, 10%, okay? They had to meet certain experience criteria, show us some training that they had accomplished, and, but we didn't limit the number of master police officers, NPO. and, but we didn't limit the number of master police officers, NPO. We did not do that. And so we, these 60 employees. So that's what we did to retain current employees and that four to 10 years of experience window, because it was important for us to keep that experience. We also have increased the pay for police officers. I think Leah will tell me, at the beginning of the year, we were somewhere around $44,600 for starting pay for police officers. If we, if we, if the council approves this pay plan on January 1st, that number will be $47,700. And at the end of six months, those employees, and when we hire them in as a trainee, they have no experience, and we have to pay them to go through the police academy. Correct, Leah?
That is correct.
That is correct. So these are employees that have no public safety experience. We pay them to go through the academy, and at the end of that, and they complete their probationary period, they get an additional 5 percent, which will put them right at $50,000.
Correct.
And so we feel like we're making the right decisions as it, certainly as it relates to police. But we're having to, because of the unusual circumstances involving the labor market, we're having to have sit-down discussions about certain positions to understand what we can do. So you all did master police officer. You also created a equipment operator three in solid waste, because we were having some issues in solid waste, and that was something else that the council did as part of your budget. So I don't want anybody to think that we haven't done anything in anticipation of the, of this true-up.
Right.
We have been making changes all along to make sure that we address those places where we're not able to fill those positions, and those that where we see high vacancy rates. Now I'll stop talking.
And I'll make a comment. You know, I think that instead of doing studies, I think the best indication are the exit interviews. And, you know, I've got faith in our staff that's able to, to keep up with that and understand the reasoning, because there could be a million different reasons why somebody's leaving. It doesn't just mean that they're leaving because the pay's wrong. And I think we probably need to have a better understanding of that before we make rash decisions on making changes to it. But I also want to say that, you know, I don't want to water down this whole study by getting down a rabbit hole and talking about one department, because I think it's important for us to go ahead and just move forward and take a vote on this. It's the council's prerogative to move forward with it or not to move forward with it. But, you know, these are discussions that we can have with staff. We can have these discussions in our upcoming planning session in January, when we start to talk about the budget. And hopefully, at that point, we'll have better understandings for each department, what the needs are, how we retain employees, and how we compensate them, to show them that we truly do care about them. Because we love our employees, we love our police officers, we love our fire and rescue, we love our public works, we love our city manager's office, we love our HR, we love our financial services-
We love our-
And our attorney's office.
Not the-
And-
Not the PIO.
Our number one, our clerk's office.
Yes.
So we love all of our employees. You guys are all amazing. So, does anybody else have any other comments? All right. I got a motion by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Any questions or any, none being, we need a motion and a second.
So move.
Prox second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
I don't think we have a problem. We need a second.
Second?
We stand adjourned.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Yep, that is, yep. 7:38.
This is part of the department.
This is all.[1778.33]